Good evening. It is 4:00 PM Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022. This is a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. The motion to call the meeting to order. So moved. Second one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Your guys are present. We do not have minutes to be approved. We do not have any meeting mail. Tonight is an historic occasion, the town of Acushnet. We, the Board of Selectmen, have the distinct honor and privilege of watching in the swearing-in of our Fire Chief, Mr. Thomas Farland. Mr. Thomas Farland has had a dedicated and decorated career here in the town of Acushnet, and has served in many capacities, and has went through a very rigorous process, and was the well-deserved candidate and appointee to the position of Fire Chief. I know you're here with your family and your parents. To the parents, you're never too old. Your kids are never too old to hear what a great job they're doing. So to you and your parents, congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Farland.
Thank you.
To your wife and your children, you had a great dad and a great husband. And we're really privileged to have him represent us here in the town of Acushnet in a very, very important public safety position. Not only as a Fire Chief, oversees our paramedics and EMS, and soon to be EMA. But in all seriousness, Tom, you have deserved this, and your career of hard work and your credibility has put you in a position to succeed, and we look forward to watching you grow in the position. So with that, we know that we've made the appointment. We have to make it official with a swearing-in. So we have our town clerk, this Pam Levontin, who will oversee that.
My pleasure. I'll check that out. And I'm going to have you turn so that way you can see you. Okay? You're going to repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
Aye, Thomas Farland.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the town of Acushnet Fire Chief.
As the town of Acushnet Fire Chief.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To and will uphold.
To and will uphold.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the town charter.
And the town charter.
And bylaws of the town of Acushnet.
And bylaws of the town of Acushnet.
I will obey.
I will obey.
And be bound by such rules.
And be bound by such rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
As are now or may be.
As are now or may be.
Established by.
Established by.
The town of Acushnet.
The town of Acushnet.
And its Fire Department.
And its Fire Department.
And EMA.
And EMA.
And, I'm sorry, emergency.
And EMS.
EMS, yes. Okay. I state your name.
I, Thomas Farland.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will never betray.
That I will never betray.
My badge.
My badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have.
I will always have.
The courage to hold myself.
The courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the Constitution.
I will uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the Acushnet Fire Department.
And the Acushnet Fire Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Thomas Farland.
Hereby accept the position.
Hereby accept the position.
Of Chief of Fire.
Of Chief of Fire.
For the town of Acushnet.
For the town of Acushnet.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well. So not to put you on the spot, I don't know if there's anything you want to say to your family or to those who are watching.
No, just, I just want to reiterate what I said each time I've been up here. Just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to have this position and lead these guys and girls and just do what I can to help protect this town.
Thanks, Tom. You can maybe grab a photo with the chief.
We got a ceremony. Is she going to do a penny?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. Let's check that out first.
You, Joe.
Joe.
You.
Oh.
Just go.
Dress the ball.
I do that.
It's off. It's. Put it as fast as you can.
Get everybody up. Tom, please take it from your family first.
Yeah, did you get in the back?
Right there.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Congrats. Well done. You good?
Good.
Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you. All right, as we. The next item is Mr. Farland specific again. As you know, Mr. Jerry Bergeron has retired from the, is the Director of EMA. And Mr. Chief Farland has agreed to take on this responsibility. Mr. Gaspar, I know you oversaw this sort of onboarding. Any thoughts?
I do not. Obviously, it's a great fit. Sorry to see Mr. Bergeron felt, but he's, it's time for him to retire from his positions. And Mr. Farland's a great fit for that position now in the Fire Department, kind of keeping it all in the one umbrella. So I make a motion to appoint Mr. Farland as the EMA Director.
Well, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great.
Congratulations.
All right, as we. As we look at one career before us, it's an opportunity now to look at somebody else's new careers. And the police chief is here. It's Chief Richmond here. Chief Richmond, thank you. You have before us the recommendation of several men and women from the community to the role of officers, police officers. So with that, we'll turn it over to you, Chief.
Yes, very briefly, I'm just going to give you a little background on what we did, and then I'll let each one of the candidates give a couple-minute, you know, brief kind of build on the written background that, you know, we gave you on each one of them. The process started with the candidates taking a civil service exam. The board, so graciously, in September solicited three full-time positions. We put out the list, put out the call, and for those three positions, we got nine, nine applications. Fortunately, based on civil service rules, we can only consider three of the top seven that responded. Those top three, I'm sorry, those top seven all were given lengthy applications. Fill those out. My Detective Sergeant Jeremy Fons and Detective Ryan Hemphill were charged with doing a lot of background checks in a relatively short amount of time, in addition to their other duties. But they went here, there, and everywhere, talked to family members, coworkers, personal references, school contacts and whatnot. From there, we went through the list, and then we had interviews, board interviews. Again, Detective Sergeant Fons, Detective Hemphill, also a couple Sergeants Carew, Sergeant Coppa, Sergeant Bolerino as well, sat in on the interviews. Board interview, kind of a, I won't say modified stress, but just kind of put them all on the same page and asked the same 10 questions. And then we had a couple of questions that were specific to their backgrounds. And from there, we looked at the totality of the backgrounds and their experience, and we came up with the candidates that we have. Now, we requested three. We were fortunate enough, one of the candidates, as you'll soon learn, has a full-time police academy under her belt and is also employed as a police officer and has been for a couple of years in a university environment, which then, so she'd be able to come onboard, be online, you know, a lot quicker, be able to help us out, you know, this fiscal year. The remaining two slots that we have would have to go to a state police, state-certified police academy. We're up against the gun trying to get into an academy that starts in February. So what we've done in the last couple appointments is we've appointed, you know, for the number of spots, we've appointed like an alternate. So what I'm proposing that we do tonight is, obviously, we have three, point three, and then one of those, and then a fourth person as an alternate in the event that one of the top three can't fulfill their obligation or has a change of heart or something like that. The way the academies are scheduled and held, we're really, we're really held captive by the scheduling. So it really behooves us to have an alternate. If the top three, you know, make it through, then unfortunately, the alternate doesn't make it this round, but that alternate will be in a position to, when we call for the list again, you know, some way down the road, will be that far ahead of where we need to be. So that's what I propose we do. So without any further ado, I'm going to introduce, we'll start with Courtney Soares. Courtney, if you just want to come up. I'll surrender the podium.
Thank you.
No problem.
Laura, so like Chief said, my name is Courtney. Just a little bit about myself. Middle school comes around and everybody asks that kind of big question, what do you want to be when you grow up? What do you want to do for the rest of your life, essentially? Mine's always been policing, something, something great about putting people in a better position than where you found them. So that's, that's always been my, my goal, my plan. And so when high school came around, I applied to graduate in Bedford-Vogue Tech, got into a shop there that was criminal justice-based, so learned a little bit about the court system, a little bit about policing, and similar things there. Came time to apply for college, as Chief had already mentioned, Fitchburg State University. I went to school there as well as work there currently. While I was there, I was part of what is called the four-plus-one program or police program. So each class, I'm expected to show up, boots polished, you know, five-eleven khakis, polo, hair up, the whole nine. So it kind of already got me into that academy mindset. Lucky enough, graduated with my bachelor's degree in criminal justice in 2020, attended the academy that summer, graduated from that, and then also started my career with Fitchburg State University as well as my master's degree. Completed my master's degree within the next year, and I've been with Fitchburg State since then. During my time there, I've got to do police mountain bike training, sexual assault investigator training, CIT training, which is crisis intervention, as well as RAD training, which is a self-defense course for, for women. So I look forward to continuing my training and my career with the Acushnet Police Department, and thank you all for being here.
Great, thank you. We have a great background. You'd be a great asset to the department and to the community. So thank you for showing your interest in us. Thank you. Next will be Josh Freitas.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Freitas. I've been born and raised here in Acushnet. I went to Acushnet Elementary School and the middle school. When it was time for high school, I applied for Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. I went there, chose automotive. Then I knew I wanted to be a cop, but unfortunately, no shop there had a criminal justice program. So when I graduated there, I joined the Army National Guard. And for my MOS, I chose military police. So I got some background information on criminal justice, things of that nature, had the training. I figured it would be a good step to, to learn the background of the, of the trade. So then when I came back home from basic training, I applied to Bridgewater State University. I'm pursuing my bachelor's degree right now for criminal justice, and I'm just thankful for the opportunity and can't wait to see where this brings me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Very good. Incredible background, just very impressive resume. So thank you for sticking with Acushnet and, you know, offering to serve the community and our residents in this capacity. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next up will be Leah Rego. You may recognize her as a current member of the department who works as a dispatcher, but I won't steal her thunder. I'll let her give her background.
Good evening. My name is Leah Rego. So I am a resident of Acushnet. I've lived here most of my life. I ended up going to Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School for culinary arts. I went to Johnson and Wales for culinary, thought that was kind of what I wanted to do. I had policing always in the back of my mind, but didn't think it was something I could pursue. I kind of got a wake-up call and realized that it was something I could do. So I was able to put myself through the part-time academy with Acushnet sponsoring me without the promise of employment. So I was able to go through that. Unfortunately, it was the COVID academy, so the six-month academy turned into a nine-month academy. But I was able to push through on that. And Chief Richmond, when the opportunity came up, was able to give me the chance to be a 911 dispatcher for the town. So I have been doing that for two and a half, going on three years now, being with the town. And now that the opportunity has come up, I would like to continue my career and go on to the officer side of things for the town.
Great. Again, I feel like we've got an all-star team in front of us today. This is pretty amazing. Leah, thank you for, first of all, betting on yourself, right? And you knew this is what you wanted to do, and you made it happen. And it's a great lesson for, for anybody of all ages. If you want to make something happen bad enough, you'll figure out a way to do that. So thank you for believing in us, as we're going to believe in you. So thank you for putting yourself forward.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Ryan Rego. The last name sounds familiar. It should. Ryan?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Rego, as you just heard, and I lived here in Acushnet for most of my life. I went to elementary, middle school here. After middle school, I applied and got into Old Colony for carpentry. But I've always had a passion for law enforcement, and I've always wanted to be a police officer. So after Old Colony, I attended UMass Dartmouth for a bachelor's in criminal justice. I am currently in my junior year there, and I am just excited to be a part of this process and learn from everything and gain the opportunity.
Great. Also, I noticed that you're a member of the football team.
I am.
When I read, you guys had a great season this year, right? You still in the playoffs, or you guys?
Unfortunately, we lost with Ithaca in New York this past weekend.
First, first time, though, right, for the program?
It is our second time.
Second time? Great. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Again, like your colleagues and, you know, friends here, thank you for sticking with the community and you reinvesting in us. We hope to invest in you. Gentlemen, any thoughts here?
I think everybody that's shown up tonight seems like they're really excited about protecting our town. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that's here and putting your faith in Chief Richmond. It's a, it's a good thing because he makes good decisions. He's a smart man. Just pay attention to everything he does.
Thank you. Mr. Gaspar, I know you probably have a sense of pride as an alum of Old Colony to see those.
Yes. It's always, it's always a good thing. I love Acushnet residents, right? I'm home-bred. My whole life I spent here. So, you know, anybody that spends their life in the town of Acushnet, like I have, and, you know, attends our school system, then goes off to Old Colony, I mean, what can I say, right? It's, it's a great thing to see these young men and women step up to the plate, especially in a profession that we all thought, maybe a year or two ago, was kind of going to hell in a handbasket. But for these young men and women to step up to the plate, thank you very much for doing that. I think you'll enjoy working in the town of Acushnet. We're a nice little community. Hopefully, we'll always stay that way, as a nice-dish little community. We don't get ourselves wrapped up in the city stuff, but it's a great town. I'm very proud of the town that I reside in and I represent, so hopefully you will as well. Don't listen too much to the Sergeant Fons.
I was just about to say, you guys are lucky, you know. You've got some great.
We've got a couple of them.
Great veterans on the force who will be great mentors for you.
Truly.
So I encourage you to keep your eyes open and your ears open and take advantage of that learning opportunity. It's not very often that you have that chance to do that. So with that, gentlemen, it's a great honor and distinction to put forward the names of Ms. Courtney Soares, Mr. Joshua Freitas, Ms. Leah Rego as police officers, and Mr. Ryan Rego as alternate. Is there a motion to appoint? So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, next. I am on your own business. As you know, we have been going back and forth in an effort to secure a building inspector in town. I want to just give a chance, take this opportunity to give a shout-out to Jim Merrick, who's been serving as an interim for us. Has really provided a great, great service to the town in that capacity to keep things moving. Remember what that said. We're lucky, we're fortunate that we have a veteran, Mr. Andrew Bola, who has agreed to serve the town. And so with that, gentlemen, if there are no questions regarding Mr. Bola, is there a motion to appoint Andrew John Bola?
Mr. Chairman, he was due to be here tonight, but there was a family issue. He had to attend.
We can bring him in another time.
I scheduled him for the sixth.
Okay. Yep.
The, so it is nice that we can get somebody that's, you know, he's retired, he's got a ton of years of experience, and he's commissioner as well. But I think that the board needs to look at it and say, what are we doing longer term, right? It's nice to fill this vacancy because it's a need, but we need to look at it in the upcoming budget season to discuss and advertise and do the thing to try to find somebody that's more of a permanent position. We talked about numerous things, and I know that there's a salary here, but it's something that we need to discuss in the, in the future. So I know it's for, for the remainder of this year.
Correct. Mr. Gaspar has discussed with me on multiple occasions, and we're looking to see, if there is other monies in the budget, we're looking to see if we can get a local inspector to be mentored by this gentleman. This gentleman is involved in the training and the exam writing for the certification on the state level, so he's a perfect mentor. So in effect, Acushnet is, again, growing their own and bringing someone on and hopefully training someone that in the next couple of years will be your full-time inspector.
Okay. With that said, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Bola, Andrew John Bola, as a building inspector? So, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. All right, you in business, nothing but new business. Under the DPW, we have, turn this over to Mr. Kelly, but it's a Veterans Square Memorial relocation.
Yep. I've met a couple times with representatives from the various veterans organizations. We were looking at this memorial because it had been neglected. We set our folks down to clean up around it. One of the problems is there are so many other signs, poles, guy wires down there. We were going to relocate it to the front of the square, but when we tried to do that, we found out that the sign was in very poor shape. The veterans have been, organizations have been contacted. They are replacing the sign, but we did move the pole. We left the existing sign there rather than take it down until we get the new sign. But we moved the pole up front, so now it will not be so obstructed by all of the other signage and stuff down there.
Okay, great. So do we need a vote on this, or is this more FYI?
FYI. And if I do need a vote in the future as far as any relocation of other signs down there, safety signs, it'll be in consultation with the DPW.
Very good. Okay, thank you for that attention. It's very important to do on behalf of Mr. Farrell's family and his legacy. Slocombe Street, Niaboo. Mr. Kelly?
As you know, we are looking to do this project with Opera Funds. We have gone through a very, a long process with the DPW. We put out an RFP for engineering. Woodward and Kern were the low bidders. We then sat down and discussed with them scope of services. We're at a juncture now that they're coming in to look at a preliminary scope of services. They understand that they'll be meeting with DPW, my office, and Mr. Gaspar, because he was the person that you folks appointed as point on this. Right now, we're looking at Opera monies, transportation bond-issue monies, and an article. We have $4,417,000, the most expensive estimate so far. Option one is $6,88,811. And that includes everything from water mains, hydrants, water services, granite curbs, concrete sidewalks, roadway paving, the accessibility programs, and lighting. There will also be some plantings along Slocombe Street. It does not include any sewer upgrades if they're needed or stormwater upgrades. We are, they'll, as part of their prelim, their design, they'll be doing evaluations of that, including using cameras on the existing stormwater systems. Design right now for the most expensive is $282,652. These are preliminary figures. We have to sit down and actually make sure what the town's options are. In addition, because we have some infrastructure work that has to be done, and there are projects at the lower end of Slocombe Street that are, could be involved, we can approach Mass Works. And they would, rather than the MVP grant, Mass Works grant is better, and that can be approximately $1,500,000. And so we'll be going forward with that. The design stage is going to take somewhere between seven months and 12 months. So we're within the Opera timeframe to put shovel in the ground.
Okay.
And they say it'd be about an 18- to 20-month project, and that would put us within the Opera finishing date.
Okay.
So it's just reporting to you folks. Woodward and Kern would be doing surveying, field investigation, geotechnical work, modeling, and design, as well as giving funding assistance for us to go after the Mass Works grant. as well as giving funding assistance for us to go after the MassWorks grant and permitting. So it's just an update. We've got to keep moving and pressing forward on this because we do have a tight time schedule. And Woodward and Kern would be, will be meeting with Mr. Gaspar and staff within the next two months for the next stage.
I assume we're going to have, we'll have some built-in checkpoints along the way, right? To determine, we don't want to be a big, we don't want to get ourselves into a big dig situation, right?
No.
That's what I'm looking at. It looks like something is, you know, a lot of expenses, right? I mean, I can't believe the costs to do this is beyond me, but.
We've also, according to DPW and Woodward and Kern, we're going to have to upgrade the, from an eight-inch pipe up to a larger pipe on at least Slocum Street. And we also have to make sure of the connections, not only at the lower end of Slocum, but at South Main Street.
Okay. All right.
I look forward to.
Report back on the progress.
It's been scaffold so far, but now we're going to dump it on Mr. Gaspar.
Yeah, great. That's just what I need. But anyways, it's, yeah, we'll, we'll see what, what happens. I mean, it's just, you know, money, we'll have to figure that out, right? I just, I mean, it's big, big dollars, and I'm shocked that that small stretch of road is four, five million dollars. But it's what it is, we'll figure it out. We got to get moving, because if we don't get moving.
And hopefully, we can do it with the ARPA money, grant money, because the ARPA money can be the town's share for the grants. So we don't have to have any matching town funds other than the ARPA money.
Okay.
So hopefully, we can pick the state's pocket enough to get this done.
Very nice. All right, item number three, Hamlin Street. To be honest with you, they're talking about sticker shots.
Tell me about it. Everybody's talking about this, I don't even know how, we haven't even discussed it.
Three years to construct, like, what, I mean, what are we talking about here?
And they're not even lined.
I mean.
200 feet of road, right?
Right, I mean, I've, I've heard, I've read articles about like the potential replacing of the New Bedford-Ferhaven Swing Bridge, like taking less than a year or a year. And you're telling me that this is a three-year, three-year project? I mean, this has got to be a typo or something.
It's a total mass DOT project, as you know. And part of it is, it got a great deal of mitigation to do because it's a water body.
Most bridges are. Just saying.
I'm, I'm hoping that this is the.
I mean, didn't we do one from Sanibel Island back to the mainland in a week in Florida? I know that was a temporary one. I just, I, I, there's a lot of residents, I guess, that are watching agendas. And I've talked to several of them already, and I said, look, I said, I know it's, Hamlin Street, as the woman is concerned, is, is very valid, right? Three years is a long period of time, and Hamlin Street is a major cut through pottery, as is Leonard Street and Lake Street. There's only three of them that get you from Main Street to Middle Road. Hamlin being one of them. Long overdue, I get it. I'm in Selectment ONS camp. Three years is a very long time for a couple hundred, max 300 feet of roadway. I don't know. I can't even fathom shutting that road down for three years.
Push, 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 that's all we can say. We're going to push, push, push.
As, as I said, it's not a town project, it's a state project.
No, we get it.
Well, if there's any fast-track permitting, whatever that needs to be done, hopefully, we can move that along as much as possible, so.
We'll probably have to utilize a new state route.
Right. That's right. Okay. All right, next item, this is good news.
This is great news.
The board, in September, I think, started the process of trying to address snowplow drivers. And pleased to report right now, as of now, we have 15 under contract with a potential of six more that may be signing up soon. You know, in part, the board decided, took decisive action to increase the rates and make it more attractive for folks to, to provide that service for us. It's, it's a critical thing that we've got to do, so I commend the board for taking that action and planning in September rather than waiting until now. So, you know, as they say, proper planning prevents poor performance, right? So that'd be a lesson.
That's the six piece, there's another one you missed, but okay.
I'm not going to say it, I'm not going to use it, we're on TV.
Yeah, I, I use it all the time.
So.
It is great news.
Let this be a note that, you know, we should always be forward-thinking for things that aren't necessarily right in front of us, so.
It is, it is great news, and by no means, I mean, I think we used, used to have like 30 subcontractors plus our own DPW crew. So if it's not, if there's more people out there that want to snowplow for the town of Kuschnet, please just visit our DPW office, go see Kathy or Ann, and they'll give you all the information that you need. I know I've had a couple of folks I've sent over. And I actually have a guy that just bought a truck, and I said, well, why don't you go buy a plow for that truck? And he actually did that and went up there and seen Kathy and Ann and got the paperwork that they needed. And just go to proof of insurance and, and you're off and running. So if there's any more people out there that are interested, it's a great rate. It's a sign-on bonus, I think it was what, a thousand bucks?
Thousand bucks.
For a perfect attendance.
Five percent over the standard.
So, you know, we're, we're going to be in a lot better shape if all 15 of these stay on board. We're in a lot better shape than we were the previous year, so. Great, great move.
Great. All right, let's see, we've got, we have an executive, future meeting is Tuesday, December 6. We do have executive session at 5:30 with the ZBA. So we'll have to take a recess. Gentlemen, we were scheduled to go into executive session to deal with contract negotiations, but we do not have the information that we needed for that, so we're going to have to pass over that. So we will have to take a recess quite some time and then re-adjourn. Why don't we re-adjourn at like 5:25, and we can open up the executive session and do that. So is there a motion to go into recess and reconvene at 5:25?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we need to reconvene from our recess, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and then go into executive session. Is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the zoning Board of Appeals, executive session under General Law Chapter 38, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation known as Selco partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless versus Town of Kuschnet, Massachusetts. That is one, colon, 22 EV 11789. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the public body, as the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session. Is there a motion to go into executive session by the Board of Selectmen?
So moved.
Second? Roll call vote, Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The Board of Selectmen is in executive session. Now the ZBA must open up their meeting and go into executive session.
Make a motion, open up meeting?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We, we are an open meeting? Read the, read the. We are an open meeting, I need a motion to go into.
Hold on, we have town council.
Just before the board makes the motion, the chair just needs to make the declaration that having an open meeting will have detrimental effect.
I, I think I, I thought I did that in my, in the motion.
You did, you just did a sound, the zoning board.
Oh. The zoning board is motion. They're going to read the same motion.
And then the motion second.
Okay.
Not just the motion.
I'd like to ask our board to make a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
To discuss the strategy with respect to litigation known as Selco partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless versus the Town of Kuschnet at all. 122 CV 11789, in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, as chair, as the chair so declares, as the board will not return in public session. Do we have a motion?
Second?
Motion in a second. I do need a roll call vote, if we could all just raise hands, please.
No.
We have to call out the names.
You'll have to do a roll call.
It's executive session.
And Tom?
Chuck?
Chuck, I'm sorry.
Oh, Chuck Leonard.
Your brother's Tom. Ray?
Yeah?
Go ahead.
And Bob?
We're all in.
Okay.